Good evening. Just waiting on Review TV, but the TV's off. There we go, alright. Good evening, this is the December 18th meeting of the Revere City Council Zoning Subcommittee. We have several items on our agenda this evening. The first, first I'll start with the members in our committee. Councillor Keefe, Councillor McKenna, Councillor Powers, Councillor Rotundo is absent and Councillor Zamburo. We're also joined by Councillor Patch. There are several items on our agenda this evening. The first is, did you hear a weird echo? C-17-14, and this is for 6 to 8 Garfield Ave. Does anyone here that wishes to speak on this? Any members of the committee?
Did the developer come, is she not here?
She's not here.
Okay. I got one of, I just have one thing to say, I mean, you know, if you don't have anything nice to say, you don't say it at all, so I'll keep it to that on this point here.
Well put councillor. I will add, there were several recommendations by site plan review, but after the last zoning Subcommittee meeting and as well as the council whole meeting, it was the committee's recommendation not to vote this out favorably based on several things. Primarily parking is a concern and the legality of the parking spots that were on the side of the building, as well as safety for how many units are actually in that building. There's just a lot of unanswered questions that the council did not feel comfortable moving forward on this. So, this will be voted out unfavorably this evening to the council as a whole. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Next, we have calendar item C-17-15 for 542 Beach Street, Revere.
Good afternoon, Attorney Laurence Scatino here on behalf of the owner Leon Gespence for 542 Beach Street in Revere. We're here today to change the occupancy from six to eight units at this location. This location unbeknownst to my client, he's had it, he's purchased the building in 2014 as an eight unit building. It's been assessed as an eight unit building for as far back as I can see in the records. We have, we were supplied lead certificates for eight units and the fire department had issued certificates of compliance for eight units on this building. So at this point, we are asking to change that occupancy to the eight units. The violation that we have is for parking. However, my client also owns 536 Beach Street and there is parking available at that site. Not all of the tenants in the building have vehicles at 542 and we are willing to use that site to have off-street parking as well. And with that, I can take any questions.
Perfect. There were four recommendations of site plan review. Did you have any questions or concerns with any of them or did you receive those?
I didn't receive any.
Okay. I will read them, just so you have them, and Madam Clark perhaps we can forward them a copy. The first is that each of the two additional units be converted into two separate one-bedroom units. Second is a special permit shall be subject to the review and approval by the fire department to bring the entire building up to fire safety codes. Third is that the special permit shall be subject to the final construction plan review for code compliance of the entire building to be performed by the building department code compliance officer to bring the entire building in compliance with plumbing, electrical, and building codes. And finally, according, in accordance with section 17 dot 47, the zoning ordinance, the special permit is subject to the participation of the community improvement trust fund in which 3% of the construction costs of the two additional one-bedroom units be paid into the community improvement trust fund prior to the issuance of a building permit. So we'll get a copy of those too. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you. My client fully intends to keep that building up to building code and will provide any access any of the departments need.
Perfect. So this will be voted out by the committee with site plans, recommendations. Any members of the committee have any questions? Councillor Zamburo.
I'm not normally inclined to support these things, but I've looked into this one and I think under the circumstances, it certainly has the merit for me to vote for it, especially with the additional parking guaranteed at the next door building or whatever it is. So I'm going to support this and I hope my colleagues do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. We're also joined by my colleague councillor Guanasa. Are there any other councillors in the committee or out of the committee that have any questions? Seeing as there are none, I move to vote this out favorably with the conditions of site plan to the council this evening. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
So that will be recommended out favorably. The next item on the agenda is C-17-16, Eamon Street Investment LLC, and this is regarding 14 Eamon Street. Attorney Rhodes?
Good afternoon. Corey Rhodes with D'Ambrosio Brown LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue in Revere. I represent the applicant's Eamon Street Investment LLC. We're seeking a special permit to construct a beautiful new three-story structure with 22 small apartment units and four commercial spaces. This is a property that has apartment use already allowed in it, but it is a, the existing structure there is a non-conforming structure and we think this is a better use for the property and really ties into the buildings downtown and is in a key location for improvement. This project will also increase the commercial tax base, bringing these four new businesses to the downtown area and also activate the sidewalks for greater pedestrian use. In regards to parking, this location is adjacent to three major bus lines, the 116, the 117, and 119. There are transit options available at this site and even a little further down the road, the Silver Line on Broadway gives you a direct shot into Boston. The units here are going to be marketed specifically to young professionals and people without cars. Going beyond that, the landlord is even prohibiting in the lease that any resident will not have a car registered to this address. They're knowing that there's, there's no parking on this site and they're not going to have a car here. And I want to reiterate that these are small units. The vast majority of them are around 260 to 400 square feet. Only four of them are coming up to 650 square feet, which is still small. There are no two bedrooms, no three bedrooms, these are all studios and one bedrooms. We don't see this being a family apartment building, we see this for young professionals. There's a dedicated professional management that is going to be operating this property. They have just a very good history of other buildings in the area that, that have this same high level of, of service. Finally, parking should not be an additional concern here because of the McKinley School parking lot, the municipal parking lot that's going to be opening up across the street that my client has already pledged to restripe, do some repairs, and update the ball field. This is going to be adding over 25, 30 new parking spaces for use by the, the entire neighborhood. It's a good project for, for the area, it's really being tailored to, to fit in with the surroundings and bringing young professionals to the area that aren't going to need cars. These are people that utilize bikes, Ubers, Zip Cars, it's a new, a new kind of, a generation that is not car focused. We hope you can support this project and we're happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you Attorney Rhodes. There were several recommendations by site plan review, did you receive a copy and do you have any questions?
We're all set.
Awesome, great.
Can you say what they have?
Sure. The first is, street and sidewalk bond must be placed on file with the DPW to secure performance for the installation of utilities including sewer, water, drainage, construction of concrete sidewalks and granite curbing, construction driveways and retaining walls if applicable, and landscaping. The next is a sewer connection and water connection permit must be obtained from the DPW. The city engineer and DPW superintendent must review and approve the proposed sewer service and water service plan. Number three is final plan shall be received and approved by the fire department for compliance with fire safety codes. Number four is based on the city's sewer mitigation inflow infiltration removal requirement. Sewer mitigation fee in the amount of $31,460 for the 22 bedrooms shall be paid to the city of Revere in two installations, 50% prior to the issuance of building permit and 50% prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. This is based on the city's formula of 110 gallons per bedroom by 10 by $1.30. Number five is the installation of new concrete sidewalks is required along the full frontage of the property along Eamon Street, along with a streetscape improvement and planting of two new street trees along Eamon Street's frontage. Number six is bike racks and bicycle storage space should be included within the building design. In addition, the developers shall establish a transportation demand management program including a statement in the lease in which residents will not be allowed to have vehicles, which the attorney stated. Final elevation plans in exterior building materials should be subject to the approval of site plan review committee. All roof and mechanical units shall include noise baffles and be screened from viewing of abutting residential properties. And finally, in accordance with chapter 17 forty-seven, this is the 3% to the community improvement trust fund. Any questions? We'll ask the word councillor, councillor Keefe.
Thank you Madam Chairwoman. Obviously this, this falls in my ward and I take a large deal of responsibility in making sure that the projects that come our way are represented well, both from the residents in the area and the residents of the whole, but also from the developer. So this, this process, this project has been on, on the table for well over a year. The first round that we went through, there were some, some tweaks and some adjustments made based on some of the feedback, but also based on what we, we all felt comfortable with, or I felt comfortable with and the developer felt comfortable with. So after going through the, the long process, there were, there were a few buckets that I put this project into with obvious concerns. The, the positives I started with was we were dealing with a developer that the city knows well, that has always come to the table with great projects and stood by them, not, not a developer that comes in and drops it in. not a developer that comes in and drops it in and permits it and then sells it, stands behind his product, project, stands behind his neighborhood and helps support it. So when I, when I obviously brought up to the developer that there was some neighborhood concerns, I know that you can never really get all of the areas taken care of, but I know some of the more recent conversations have been taking care of different areas of fencing, repairing walls to the, to the, to the neighborhood residents that would be abutting and getting, getting as much of their, their satisfaction as possible. And there is always going to be some, some cons to that. The other positives, as we, as the attorney had mentioned, is for the entire neighborhood, the, the addition and the, the assistance with the municipal lot would obviously not just provide potential parking for that area, but parking for the whole, that's also going to help the downtown Broadway area, which I'm most concerned with because we have a, we have a downtown Broadway that I, I want to see more people coming to on a weekend, stopping, going for a cup of coffee, getting, getting a sandwich or something to eat. I know we have a restaurant that's going to be going on that corner as well, so that municipal lot, I think, will help activate Broadway even more. And then, of course, the little, the little adages of, of taking care of the basketball court would be, is a, is a nice one, but that didn't sway the project by any stretch of the imagination, in my opinion. But the last piece is, this is a, is a multimillion-dollar investment in that area that is most, mostly known for being part of Broadway. It's, it's almost an extension of Broadway where it comes right off of it. It's in somewhat of a, of a downtown area that extends itself into a really nice neighborhood. So I think the addition of this pro, this project into that area of the city is going to be much more of a benefit than it would be a deterrent, or be, be a, something that would take away from the, the community. I think it's going to add to it very much so. So I am in favor of it. Certainly, like I said, there's, there's going to be areas of, that aren't perfect and, and my hopes is, knowing the developer that has, has a very good track record, that will stay on top of the things and make sure that everything's done well and satisfaction to the, the entire neighborhood. So I am in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a couple of questions, Corey. You said there was a restaurant that was coming into the commercial aspect of it. Could you tell me, do you have a restaurant that is coming in? A name or?
I think right now they're, they're just looking at a number of different tenants. It, it's still early stages to get approved and built, so I think it might be hard to sign up a, a specific tenant at this moment.
Right. And how big would that restaurant be?
Each, each of the commercial spaces are, I believe, seven-hundred square feet, but they can be combined if they get the right tenant to, you know, put a, put a bigger, bigger business in.
And the municipal parking across the street at the McKinley School. So you're going to keep the basketball courts and you're going to upgrade them, but how many parking spaces do you think you'd be able to get when you?
I think by our very rough estimates right now, it's going to be somewhere in twenty-five to thirty spots.
Okay. All right. That's all, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Isamburo?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. You know, I watched this develop and I want to congratulate everybody involved. That's from the ward counselor, to the developer, to the neighbors that participated. There's a lot of compromises made here. I think what's happened here now is, you know, the first thing everybody wants to do is say, "Oh, no more apartments," and not look at the existing conditions and whether something is an improvement to the neighborhood and, and that's kind of what I'm all about. I want to know what the end result is going to be. I don't want to say there's a rooming house there now, but what this finished product is, is going to revitalize a, a section and, like the counselor from the ward for said, it is an extension of Broadway. And we always take the developers that have a track record on their word. There was a building right at the corner there that this developer redeveloped and cleaned up. And I don't want to get into who was in there and what was in there. I'm sure I'll be accused of discrimination of some kind for, you know, but there was, there was a lot of illicit stuff going on there. That's all I'll say. There was, there was some, some things that we don't want in the city there and he cleaned that up. So I have complete confidence, but I, I did like the process of going back and forth, downsizing it, making it fit, getting the parking, even though there's not going to be any cars in that building, somebody will visit them and have a car. It's, it's all a good thing and so all the compromises worked well and I'm comfortable supporting this. So all I can say is congratulations to everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As my colleague said, this has been going on for quite a while and it's been, I think it's been decreased, the rentals by eleven units have been removed. I just, I also agree that this is an extension of Broadway. People can remember back on Foster Street when they built the bank there and a couple of houses had to be torn down for the parking lot and it's a very similar situation. And it turned out it's, was been used for commercial use and it's been good for the I also had a, a problem with the parking. I have seen a copy of the lease, lease, and in the lease it says that no tenant can have a motor vehicle. I would also like to, if I could, add to this, I don't know if it's possible, Madam Chairman, but if Yeeman Street ever goes to residential parking, if we could state that this building could not have residential, get residential parking. Is that still possible to do? I'll leave it up to the attorney.
I, I think that'd be fine with my clients.
Counsel, Madam Chairwoman, through you to Counsel Patch. I did speak to our parking director and mentioned that as a potential stipulation when I was talking with the attorney about having no, no, making sure leases were stated, no park, no, no vehicles to be leased to the area. And the parking director did mention that they could probably make that happen where they wouldn't issue permits to that address. So that would really alleviate it.
Okay. That's, that'd be great because I was a little concerned about the, the parking with the commercial side of it. That one, and we're, we're now opening up the, the old McKinley School parking lot. You know, that can, that can handle, again, this is a part of Broadway. And, you know, I know I'm, I'm going to get a lot of static from some people over that, but if you go to any city, Marlin, Chelsea, any, you name the city, Everett, all the side streets off of Broadway are a continuation of the main street of Broadway. We stress for our commercial, we are lucky. If you look at Broadway right now, this developer did a great job in correcting that you mentioned the problem on Yeeman Street and, and Broadway. I mean, I, I know how bad that building was because I got calls when I was a police officer to go to that building many times. And also, he improved, my dear friend, the Palladinos, he bought their building on the corner of Pleasant Street in Broadway and he did a great job in developing, no, no, not only the, the apartments upstairs, but the, the, the looks of the building. We don't have any, in some cities you go to, businesses of, small businesses are vacant. We have a very high capacity on Broadway here and, and they could use, I think they'll have no problem of developing this building. And I just, you know, I just think that this is the right building and for this spot. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Initially, I had looked at this project with some grave disdain. The number of units frightened me when we talked about no parking. And then I look at what the developer did on the corner of Pleasant Street and Broadway. I look at the building down on the Home Street, North Shore Road, which is, I happened to pass by it again last evening and it's, it's a very handsome building. There's no question about it compared to what was there, a vacant lot. I, I think that, you know, even, I'll take another one that the developer did was down on American Legion Highway, the corner of Revere Street. Building was vacant for such a long time. And the thing that I'm happy with is the fact that this building is part of the downtown business district. You can't say it isn't. I mean, you walk up, just right around the corner on Broadway, which is probably thirty-five or forty feet from this potential structure, is, it's business. There's a barbershop there, there's, there was a grocery store there for years. There's several businesses there. So it is part of the downtown business district. The lack of parking, that frightened me tremendously until I heard the, part of the lease agreement that no one is going to own a car there. And I, I would, and, you know, that, whether that's, you can do that after somebody moves in there? I, I don't think so. I think it has to be part of the lease agreement to make it legal. You know, you're, you're leasing an apartment with, without parking and that would hold up in court, I believe. It's, it's an area that looks terrible right now. And the other thing that I'm concerned with and happy about is the McKinley School parking lot, part of it used for parking. We could probably use some of that for City Hall too at times. I, I would hope that developer would understand, and I'm sure he does by putting that in the lease agreement, that should we at some point have to use that McKinley School, we would, for parking or the school itself or something else going in there, we, that would be part of that structure. So I, I'm going to throw caution to the wind this evening and I'm going to support this because I go by, I went by there the other day actually and I looked in the back and, you know, people are talking about the property right up to the, the yard. I mean, there's high walls there. The, the properties that are there now are higher than Yeeman Street, considerably higher. So I don't think that's, I don't think that's an issue. I think the only issue that I saw here was parking. I understand these are going to be all one-bedroom units and they, is that correct? So that, that satisfies my concern with more children moving into the school system because we're already heavily impacted. In fact, I have a document here that out of all the schools in the school district, the parry of their school is probably the one that's overcrowded. And that, that concerns me. But the, the other schools, as far as I'm looking at this document from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts School Building Authority, they're not overcrowded, those other schools. So I'm going to support this this evening. I know the ward counselor, Counselor Keith has done some extensive research on the project and I, I'm going to go along with this this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Welcome. Final comments from Counselor Patch?
Thank you for the, let me speak again, Madam Counselor, but I just, one thing I forgot was that, Counselor, if you could, this has already been before the zoning board appeals, right?
Correct.
And actually, they, there was a number of variances that were, that they, they approved and if you could tell the people were, what we're left with, what we're actually voting for right now. They all, all the, the variances about height and distances.
Correct.
Have been approved by the zoning board.
All those, all those dimensional approvals. Correct. Those are all approved on Wednesday.
So what are we actually?
This is for, this, this apartment use at this property, for this number of apartments.
Okay. And this has already been, if I'm not correct, if I'm mistaken, I'm sorry. This has already been approved several years ago.
Correct. It is.
For multiple use.
Correct. Not, not to interrupt you, I believe it was in two thousand and five or so that it was approved for apartment use on this site. This is for this particular building, this particular number of units, all these one-bedrooms and studios.
Okay. So because I got, I have a letter here from, that went before the zoning board, from the Director of Economic Development, Bob O'Brien, strongly supporting the, the project and what, what it means to the City of Revere as far as financial gains and what have you. And so again, I'm going to, as far as, I'm going to go along with the, the ward counselor and the administration in, in vote in favor of this. Thank you. Much pleasure.
Thank you, Counselor. If I may speak for the chair quickly. Counselor Keith and Counselor Patch stated a lot of my thoughts for this project, but I will say that, you know, these are the developments that benefit the city in terms of being mixed-use. And this developer and this group has a history of building mixed-use developments in the city that have commercial and retail space that our city really does need and they're familiar with the city. They have developed other parts of Broadway beautifully and often, these developments have been catalysts for the communities that they're in. So it's development, developments like these that have the ability to spark the good commercial development that we need in the city. And small steps like this are what we need to attract more businesses and more things in the community. So the fact that parking is essentially banned in their lease for have, to have a car is a huge benefit for our city. The fact that there is parking for the commercial space at the McKinley School is a huge benefit and overall, just the track record, I think, speaks volumes to the project. So I will also be speaking favorably for it this evening. At this time, we'll recommend to vote this out favorably to the city council as a whole with the conditions of site plan review and Counselor Patch's recommendation regarding the future of resident parking to exclude this development from any resident parking permits. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. This will be recommended favorably. The next item on the agenda is calendar item C dash seventeen dash seventeen, three-twenty to three-twenty-nine Revere Beach Boulevard. Attorney Simeone?
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the zoning subcommittee of the city council. We continue to have some issues that we want to work on, on this development. Specifically, we went with the Board of Directors of the St. George last week, made some, made some gains there. We'd probably like to tweak a little bit of the building. There'll be such some changes and I think you'll see building materials and colors specifically, along with some other things that we're working on. At this point, we would ask the committee to, this matter remaining committee and that the new council pick it up in January.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone on the committee have any questions, comments, concerns? We will leave this in committee. The next item on the agenda is calendar item CZ seventeen dash zero five. Title seventeen of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere and the zoning map provided by section seventeen dot twelve dot twenty of said title hereby amended to change the zoning district designation of the property known and known zoning district designation of the property known and numbered as Lot 120 American Legion Highway at 448 American Legion Highway from residential B to general business.
To the Chair and members of the zoning Subcommittee, good evening. Joseph Cotojo, One Sprague Street, Revere, representing the applicant seeking a zoning change to a single lot from residential to commercial to, as I had indicated before, a correct and incorrect zoning designation for a lot that currently holds half of a commercial building, is taxed as commercial and is attached to a long strip of nine adjoining lots that are also commercial. We have, as required, been before the planning board. I believe you'll note that there was a unanimous decision there. We've also had discussions with the ward counselor in which we had represented that we will offer a neighborhood meeting once the zoning is set and plans are then brought forward for whatever proposal the new owners will make. But at this time, we're just seeking to correct the zoning for that single lot. Hopefully, here to answer any questions you might have as well. Thank you.
I will note that we do have a letter from the planning board that this was voted out favorably with their recommendation as well, so I'll just put that on the record. Any members of the Subcommittee have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing as there are none, we will vote to move this favorably before the council as a whole. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. The last item on this agenda for this evening is calendar item CZ-17-06, repeal of recreational marijuana zoning ordinance. Any members of the committee? I believe we've had several lengthy discussions about this. We left it in committee, so our colleague Counselor Keefe could be involved because we know that he definitely was vocal on it and supported it. So Counselor?
Madam Chair, thank you. This is, again, we've, this is more of just a cleanup with the zoning change or the ordinance change. As you know, it needs to go through a certain number of levels, and we've talked about this in the past where, when the city's going through these types of changes, we, there's a lot of crossing Ts and dotting Is that come along with it. The gist of it happens to be that, as a community, we spoke up and decided that recreational marijuana wasn't for the city. More so, not to say it's the worst thing in the world, in my opinion, I don't like it very much, and I don't think it, I think that we have a significant image problem in our city that we need to continue to address. So this was a step for me, also being a parent, and I'd like to consider myself somewhat of a leader in the community with children and youth sports. I think that sends the wrong message to our children. I'm not suggesting that if you're forty-five or fifty years old, you can't do what you want to do, or twenty-one years old, you can't do what you want to do. I'm more so invested and interested in what the messages we send to our children. So this has gone through a lengthy process. Very happy that we've worked out all the kinks, and we've gone to this point where we're going to be able to repeal the sale of recreational marijuana within Revere. Obviously, there is one site that has already been approved for medicinal marijuana that will be able to get this one piece down on railroad Ave. And I'm not suggesting that we stand in that way, but I just wanted to make sure that we got through this as a city, and I appreciate everyone's support on making this happen because I think at this, in this case, we answered to what the polls showed, and Revere voted against it. So I'm happy that this is going to come out, hopefully, favorably tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? I move that we vote this out of committee favorably. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
May I speak?
Sure.
My name's Joe Coco. I live at 36 St. Street. I live right next to the beach. I sat here when the proposal for the condos, the apartments, right in back of the Covey River, right along Ocean Ave. I sat here, and I listened to them tell you, tell the council about the parking they were going to have for the cars. I am so sick, and I'm not saying that I'm against anything here tonight, I'm just saying I'm so sick of people coming up here, saying to you people that I want to build, I know I built two, I had my family build two houses in this city. And when I built, there had to be two cars per unit. If you didn't have the parking, you didn't build it. That's when I, that's when we built. The thing is, the law, as far as I understand, the law still applies today. If you're going to build a two-family, you got to have two cars per unit. Otherwise, we're going to have cars all over the place, such as there is on Ocean Ave. If you drive Ocean Ave at night, drive there ten o'clock at night when everybody's home, the cars are lined up all the way down past the train station. Why? Because the owner who said he had enough parking, there was going to be enough parking for them units. They have to pay for the parking. So now, instead of paying for the parking, they pay on Ocean Ave, and nobody's doing anything about it. There shouldn't be any parking on Ocean Ave from them units, and that was a big mistake. And everybody should look back into it because it was all approved, and I imagine it had to be approved because they said there was going to be enough parking, and there isn't. And somebody should come down on them. Either they give their tenants the parking for nothing, they shouldn't charge them, with the tenants paying for the apartment, and now they have to, they have to pay for the parking, or put it in the street? No, that doesn't go. But it seems now that it goes in our city. I mean, things are getting out of, I'm going to tell you something, I wish I had the money. I think I could build in the middle of Broadway. I mean, this is how it's getting to be. They're building everywhere in this city. Wait till they're all done. Wait till the beach is all done. I feel bad if you got, if one of us got a parent that's in the, in the Satterhouse. I mean, come on. The ambulance, ever see the, I live down there, I see it. You ever see the ambulances try to get down there in the summer while the person's dying, waiting to get to the hospital? It's not fair. And these buildings aren't even done yet, three-quarters of them. So, I mean, somebody's got to do something about this. There's too much building in this city. It seems like all these people that want to come in and build these matchboxes, God forbid, one of them goes up on fire. You saw what happened everywhere else in Quincy, in Roxbury. They go up, they go up like a matchbox, and there's going to be a lot of lives lost. But that's the way they build today because it's cheaper, and everybody's making money on it. So that's why they let them build that way. But I'm just saying that if you're going to allow a building to go up, and I'm not saying this one, this one comes with a contract that you can't have a car. This looks like a good project. But if you're going to have a building go up, make sure there's enough parking for two cars per unit. That's all I'm asking. Don't leave the cars on the street. And you know what? I think everybody should think about easing up on the building in this city. It's thanks to bring a business in this city, but we got enough apartments. Our school system, which three years ago, I think it was, was probably the best, and it's going to go down because we're going to bring these apartments in that you know it's going to rent out, what they're going to rent out to. They're going to say they're going to rent out to nothing but professional people. Once it's built, everything's changing. So I'm just saying two things. Let's think about any more buildings coming up in this city, these multi-b buildings that these people with money want to come in and make nothing but money out of the city while they're living in Linfield somewhere, in their big home. And number two is, if you're going to allow something, make sure there's parking, unless it's a project like this. Make sure there's enough parking. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just say that one of your points with the charging for parking, that's something that Counselor McKenna, as well as some of my colleagues, have mentioned in past meetings, and that's something that we found unacceptable up here, that I know Counselor McKenna brought up for the last couple of proposals that came before us to make sure that that doesn't happen again because it's not acceptable that, you know, they say, yes, we have the quota, but we're going to charge everyone an additional fee because people don't want to pay, and they're not going to.
I sat here through the meetings, and I watched the guy come up here saying, oh, we got parking for every one of these cars. There's not going to be anybody parking on the street. Well, somebody, all of yous, just drive by there eleven o'clock at night. Look at all the cars.
Counselor?
To your point, sir, I agree with you, but as, we were outsmarted. And now, going forward, as Counselor Janino said, we're going to try not to have these developers come in and charge for parking so people can park on the street and they don't have parking in their homes. So that's something we are going to work on because we don't want a situation like Ocean Ave to happen again.
Let me ask you this. Can't, can't something be done about that? Can't sanctions be brought against them?
I think, yes, yes, sir. I think we, I think we could do something. I mean, I can't say for sure, but I think we can do something. So going down, down the, you know, going down the road, I think we can do something because we do have to eliminate, there's, you know, there's a hotel coming in and a couple of other things-
There's a lot of things coming in.
And we just can't have parking on the street like that. We just can't.
I mean, if you're going to build, have the right amount of parking, that's all.
Right. I agree with you, sir.
And not have a guy come in like thee did. I was sat here, I sat through the meetings because I was against it.
Right.
I sat here through the meetings, and the guy said, oh, we got parking for everybody.
I think we're outsmarted. I really do. So going forward, we'll be more cautious, definitely.
But maybe get together and do something about it. Bring sanctions against them. Do something.
Sure. It's in conversation. It really is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, and hopefully, this is something we can work with the city and the DCR to come to a conclusion. This concludes the zoning Subcommittee for this evening. We'll have a brief recess, and at five o'clock, there is a presentation in memory of former council president, former council president and former mayor, Bob Haas. Thank you.[1303.47]
So calendar item number four is the legislative bench presentation.
Madam Clerk?
Dear Honorable Counselors, in keeping with the custom and tradition of the Revere City Council, the City Council shall honor six of its members by placing their names and years of service as members of the City Council on nameplates on the City Council's legislative bench, which sits in the City Council chamber behind the members of the City Council. To receive the special recognition, City Counselors must have served for a decade or more on the City Council. Currently, the names of nineteen past and present members of the City Council are on the legislative bench. Six City Counselors will be honored this evening by having their names and years of service placed on the legislative bench. They are as follows. One, Ward Three City Councilor and longest-serving member of the Revere City Council, Arthur F. Guanasso's name is placed on the legislative bench for completing thirty years of service as a member of the City Council. Two, Counselor-at-Large Robert J. Haas Jr.'s name is placed on the legislative bench with twenty-five years and six months of service as a member of the City Council. Three, Ward Two City Councilor Ira Novoselski's name is placed on the legislative bench with eighteen years of service as a member of the City Council. Four, Counselor-at-Large Anthony Zambudo's name is placed on the legislative bench with eighteen years of service as a member of the City Council. Board Five City Councilor John Powers will be placed on the legislative bench with seventeen years and seven months of service as a member of the City Council. And lastly, Counselor-at-Large George Rotundo's name is placed on the legislative bench for the first time with ten years of service as a member of the City Council. And finally, the, I'm sorry, the last City Councilor and the first time being added to the legislative bench is City Councilor Charles Patch.
Calender item number five, this is the zoning subcommittee report in ordinance amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere repeal of the definition of recreational marijuana facility.
Order on a second reading? Order on a third and final reading? On engrossment and ordainment? Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance repealing the definition of recreational marijuana facility? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been approved. Calendar item number six is the zoning subcommittee report. This is the ordinance change relative to Lot 120, American Legion Highway from RB District to General Business District.
Madam Clerk, I would like to ask Counselor Janino, as the chairwoman of the zoning subcommittee, to, if you could give us a rundown on the proposals that were in front of us this evening?
Absolutely, thank you, Counselor. I'm just pulling up the agenda. Okay, so the zoning subcommittee met earlier this evening and we discussed several items on the agenda. The, hold on one second. Transferring over to this netbook and a couple of technical difficulties. Madam Clerk, do you mind if I have the printed copy?
You see, we have to go back to the old days.
Right. Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is calendar item C-17-14. This was regarding 6 to 8 Garfield Avenue. This was recommended unfavorably by the subcommittee based on several issues. The committee had several concerns. Chiefly, parking was a huge issue, as well as the safety and compliance of the existing apartments. So this was out, recommended unfavorably. So I asked that the City Council vote this evening on this item. Would you like me to go through all of them or do you want to vote as I go?
We can do them up individually. It's fine. So currently, we're on 17-376. That's Dana Lopez in regarding the zoning amendment for 428-448 American Legion Highway, which I believe was voted out favorably from the zoning subcommittee.
So my committee agenda and the council agenda are different. Okay. So we can do the one on the council agenda first. That's absolutely fine. So yeah, that was voted out favorably with the conditions of site plan.
Madam Clerk?
Order on a second reading?
On engrossment, order on a third reading? And on engrossment and ordainment? Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council approve the zoning ordinance amendment changing Lot 120, American Legion Highway, from Residential B District to the General Business District?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been approved. Calendar item number six is the zoning subcommittee report. This is the ordinance change relative to Lot 120, American Legion Highway, from RB District to General Business District.
Madam Clerk, I would like to ask Counselor Janino, as the chairwoman of the zoning subcommittee, to, if you could give us a rundown on the proposals that were in front of us this evening?
Absolutely, thank you, Counselor. I'm just pulling up the agenda. Okay, so the zoning subcommittee met earlier this evening and we discussed several items on the agenda. The, hold on one second. Transferring over to this netbook and a couple of technical difficulties. Madam Clerk, do you mind if I have the printed copy?
You see, we have to go back to the old days.
Right. Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is calendar item C-17-14. This was regarding 6 to 8 Garfield Avenue. This was recommended unfavorably by the subcommittee based on several issues. The committee had several concerns. Chiefly, parking was a huge issue, as well as the safety and compliance of the existing apartments. So this was out, recommended unfavorably. So I asked that the City Council vote this evening on this item. Would you like me to go through all of them or do you want to vote as I go?
We can do them up individually. It's fine. So currently, we're on 17-376. That's Dana Lopez in regarding the zoning amendment for 428-448 American Legion Highway, which I believe was voted out favorably from the zoning subcommittee.
So my committee agenda and the council agenda are different.
That's right.
Okay. So we can do the one on the council agenda first. That's absolutely fine. So yeah, that was voted out favorably with the conditions of site plan.
Madam Clerk?
Order on a second reading?
On engrossment, order on a third reading? And on engrossment and ordainment? Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council approve the zoning ordinance amendment changing Lot 120, American Legion Highway, from Residential B District to the General Business District? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been approved.
Calendar item number six is the zoning subcommittee report. This is the ordinance change relative to Lot 120, American Legion Highway, from RB District to General Business District.
Madam Clerk, I would like to ask Counselor Janino, as the chairwoman of the zoning subcommittee, to, if you could give us a rundown on the proposals that were in front of us this evening?
Absolutely, thank you, Counselor. I'm just pulling up the agenda. Okay, so the zoning subcommittee met earlier this evening and we discussed several items on the agenda. The, hold on one second. Transferring over to this netbook and a couple of technical difficulties. Madam Clerk, do you mind if I have the printed copy?
You see, we have to go back to the old days.
Right. Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is calendar item C-17-14. This was regarding 6 to 8 Garfield Avenue. This was recommended unfavorably by the subcommittee based on several issues. The committee had several concerns. Chiefly, parking was a huge issue, as well as the safety and compliance of the existing apartments. So this was out, recommended unfavorably. So I asked that the City Council vote this evening on this item. Would you like me to go through all of them or do you want to vote as I go?
We can do them up individually. It's fine. So currently, we're on 17-376. That's Dana Lopez in regarding the zoning amendment for 428-448 American Legion Highway, which I believe was voted out favorably from the zoning subcommittee.
So my committee agenda and the council agenda are different.
That's right.
Okay. So we can do the one on the council agenda first. That's absolutely fine. So yeah, that was voted out favorably with the conditions of site plan.
Madam Clerk?
Order on a second reading?
On engrossment, order on a third reading? And on engrossment and ordainment? Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council approve the zoning ordinance amendment changing Lot 120, American Legion Highway, from Residential B District to the General Business District? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the zoning amendment has been approved.
All right, the next item on, we'll go off the council agenda, is number seven, so 17-404. And this was the one that I just spoke on. So this is regarding Garfield Ave. This was voted out unfavorably for the conditions that I mentioned earlier. So I recommend we vote this out this evening.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council approve the special permit for 6-8 Garfield Avenue? This is Council Order 17-404. Counselor Janino?
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Morabito?
No.
No, Counselor Novoselski?
No.
No, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
No.
No, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the zoning amendment has been approved.
The next item on, we'll go off the council agenda, is number seven, so 17-404. And this was the one that I just spoke on. So this is regarding Garfield Ave. This was voted out unfavorably for the conditions that I mentioned earlier. So I recommend we vote this out this evening.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council approve the special permit for 6-8 Garfield Avenue? This is Council Order 17-404. Counselor Janino?
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Morabito?
No.
No, Counselor Novoselski?
No.
No, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
No.
No, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Counsel Vice President Keith?
No.
No, the special permit has been denied.
The next item on the City Council agenda is item number eight. This is 17-405 regarding 542 Beach Street, Revere. We just asked that the conditions of site plan review be added to this and we voted favorably.
Mr. President?
Mr. Counsel, Novoselski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I think I spoke on this last week or the week before when I had the opportunity. I'm sorry I couldn't make it tonight. I had to spend some time with my wife in the hospital. But, you know, I know it was sort of voted out favorably, but, you know, I'm against this. It is not a good location. The building has been a hazard and trouble for the last ten years. Now, whether this person owned it or not, I don't know. But currently, I would not recommend that this be approved and putting units in the basement. It's, you have to go behind the house to get there. And the dumpster is always left out on the street and they go to empty it and it's there for days at a time. And may I say, there's one parking space there. Beach Street has no parking on one side of the street. All the time. There is no more room for any more units there. And I would highly recommend and ask the council to deny this request.
Good afternoon. Attorney Laurence Catina representing the owner Leon Gespens who recently purchased the building in 2014. At this point, hearing the counselor's concerns, I'd like to withdraw our application and we can work more closely with the city.
Roll call on motion to withdraw?
Shall the City Council allow the petitioner to grant leave, to withdraw without prejudice? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the application has been withdrawn without prejudice.
The next item on, we'll go off the council agenda, is number seven, so 17-404. And this was the one that I just spoke on. So this is regarding Garfield Ave. This was voted out unfavorably for the conditions that I mentioned earlier. So I recommend we vote this out this evening.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council approve the special permit for 6-8 Garfield Avenue? This is Council Order 17-404. Counselor Janino?
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Morabito?
No.
No, Counselor Novoselski?
No.
No, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
No.
No, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Counsel Vice President Keith?
No.
No, the special permit has been denied.
The next item on the City Council agenda is item number eight. This is 17-405 regarding 542 Beach Street, Revere. We just asked that the conditions of site plan review be added to this and we voted favorably.
Mr. President?
Mr. Counsel, Novoselski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I think I spoke on this last week or the week before when I had the opportunity. I'm sorry I couldn't make it tonight. I had to spend some time with my wife in the hospital. But, you know, I know it was sort of voted out favorably, but, you know, I'm against this. It is not a good location. The building has been a hazard and trouble for the last ten years. Now, whether this person owned it or not, I don't know. But currently, I would not recommend that this be approved and putting units in the basement. It's, you have to go behind the house to get there. And the dumpster is always left out on the street and they go to empty it and it's there for days at a time. And may I say, there's one parking space there. Beach Street has no parking on one side of the street. All the time. There is no more room for any more units there. And I would highly recommend and ask the council to deny this request.
Good afternoon. Attorney Laurence Catina representing the owner Leon Gespens who recently purchased the building in 2014. At this point, hearing the counselor's concerns, I'd like to withdraw our application and we can work more closely with the city.
Roll call on motion to withdraw?
Shall the City Council allow the petitioner to grant leave, to withdraw without prejudice? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the application has been withdrawn without prejudice.
The next item on the agenda this evening is calendar item nine.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and council vice president Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been approved. Calendar item number six is the zoning subcommittee report. This is the ordinance change relative to Lot 120, American Legion Highway, from RB District to General Business District.
Madam Clerk, I would like to ask councillor Janino, as the chairwoman of the zoning subcommittee, to, if you could give us a rundown on the proposals that were in front of us this evening?
Absolutely, thank you councillor. I'm just pulling up the agenda. Okay, so, the zoning subcommittee met earlier this evening, and we discussed several items on the agenda. The, hold on one second. Transferring over to this netbook, and a couple of technical difficulties. Madam Clerk, do you mind if I have the printed copy?
You see, we have to go back to the old days.
Right. Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is calendar item C17-14. This was regarding 6 to 8 Garfield Avenue. This was recommended unfavorably by the subcommittee based on several issues. The committee had several concerns. Chiefly, parking was a huge issue, as well as the safety and compliance of the existing apartment. So this was out, recommended unfavorably. So I asked that the city council vote this evening on this item. Would you like me to go through all of them, or do you want to vote as I go?
We can do them up individually. It's fine. So currently, we're on 17, 376. That's Dana Lopez, in regarding the zoning amendment for 428-448 American Legion Highway, which I believe was voted out favorably from the zoning subcommittee.
So, my committee agenda and the council agenda are different. That's right. Okay, so, we can do the one on the council agenda first. That's absolutely fine. So yeah, that was voted out favorably with the conditions of site plan.
Madam Clerk? Ordered on a second reading? Shown the city council approve the zoning ordinance amendment changing Lot 120, American Legion Highway, from Residential B District to the General Business District?
Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and council vice president Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been approved. Calendar item number six is the zoning subcommittee report. This is the ordinance change relative to Lot 120, American Legion Highway, from RB District to General Business District.
Madam Clerk, I would like to ask councillor Janino, as the chairwoman of the zoning subcommittee, to, if you could give us a rundown on the proposals that were in front of us this evening?
Absolutely, thank you councillor. I'm just pulling up the agenda. Okay, so, the zoning subcommittee met earlier this evening, and we discussed several items on the agenda. The, hold on one second. Transferring over to this netbook, and a couple of technical difficulties. Madam Clerk, do you mind if I have the printed copy?
You see, we have to go back to the old days.
Right. Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda is calendar item C17-14. This was regarding 6 to 8 Garfield Avenue. This was recommended unfavorably by the subcommittee based on several issues. The committee had several concerns. Chiefly, parking was a huge issue, as well as the safety and compliance of the existing apartment. So this was out, recommended unfavorably. So I asked that the city council vote this evening on this item. Would you like me to go through all of them, or do you want to vote as I go?
We can do them up individually. It's fine. So currently, we're on 17, 376. That's Dana Lopez, in regarding the zoning amendment for 428-448 American Legion Highway, which I believe was voted out favorably from the zoning subcommittee.
So, my committee agenda and the council agenda are different. That's right. Okay, so, we can do the one on the council agenda first. That's absolutely fine. So yeah, that was voted out favorably with the conditions of site plan.
Madam Clerk? Ordered on a second reading?
Shall the city council approve the zoning ordinance amendment changing Lot 120, American Legion Highway, from Residential B District to the General Business District? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and council vice president Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the zoning amendment has been approved.
All right, the next item on, we'll go off the council agenda, is number seven, so 17-404. And this was the one that I just spoke on, so this is regarding Garfield Ave. This was voted out unfavorably for the conditions that I mentioned earlier. So I recommend we vote this out this evening.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Shall the city council approve the special permit for 6-8 Garfield Avenue? This is council order 17-404. Councillor Janino?
No.
No, councillor Guanasso?
No.
No, councillor McKenna?
No.
No, councillor Morabito?
No.
No, councillor Novoselski?
No.
No, councillor Patch?
No.
No, councillor Powers?
No.
No, councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
No.
No, and council vice president Keith?
No.
No, the special permit has been denied.
The next item on the city council agenda is item number eight. This is 17-405, regarding 542 Beach Street, Revere. We just asked that the conditions of site plan review be added to this, and we voted favorably.
Mr. President?
Mr. Councillor Novoselski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I think I spoke on this last week or the week before when I had the opportunity. I'm sorry I couldn't make it tonight. I had to spend some time with my wife in the hospital. But, you know, I know it was sort of voted out favorably, but, you know, I am against this. It is not a good location. The building has been a hazard and trouble for the last 10 years. Now, whether this person owned it or not, I don't know. But currently, I would not recommend that this be approved, and putting units in the basement, it's, you have to go behind the house to get there. And the dumpster is always left out on the street, and they go to empty it, and it's there for days at a time. And may I say, there's one parking space there. Beach Street has no parking on one side of the street, all the time. There is no more room for any more units there. And I would highly recommend and ask the council to deny this request.
Good afternoon. Attorney Laurence Catina, representing the owner Leon Gespens, who recently purchased the building in 2014. At this point, hearing the councillors' concerns, I'd like to withdraw our application, and we can work more closely with the city.
Roll call on motion to withdraw?
Shall the city council allow the petitioner to grant leave, to withdraw without prejudice? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and council vice president Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the application has been withdrawn without prejudice.
The next item on the agenda this evening is calendar item nine, 17-406. This is regarding 14 Newman Street. We had a lengthy discussion on this this evening, and it was the committee's recommendation to also vote this out favorably. We had the support of the ward councillor, councillor Keith. We discussed that there is a clause in the lease that does not allow an applicant to have a car. We also discussed the parking and renovation of the park at the McKinley School. These are very, very small units. They are not very many square feet. So the majority of the committee spoke in favor of this project, as well as the way the developer has worked with the city of Revere to develop this and really downsize it. I have no other questions in the committee. We just asked that it be with the conditions of site plan review, and as well as councillor Patch's addition, if the city does go permit parking on that street, that this project be not able to apply for permit parking.
Thank you, madam. Chairwoman, any other councils wishing to speak? Here it is, you can go. Roll call, please.
Shall the city council approve the special permit for Newman Street Investment LLC, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review, and the condition set forth by councillor Patch? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Rotundo is absent. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and council vice president Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Excuse me a minute? I thought the zoning board subcommittee was meeting at 5:30 on this issue?
The zoning was 4:00 p.m. today.
We were told it was 5:30 by you.
No, I, absolutely not. The last zoning subcommittee was 5:30. That was two, last week. This one was 4:00 p.m.
I was told, when it was continued, that it was going to be at 5:30 tonight.
I'm sorry, I made a mistake. It was 4:00 p.m.
Madam Clerk, was this posted?
Yes.
Okay.
Meeting was posted on this revere.org website.
So, if you've already taken a vote on the council, it was supposed to be done at the council meeting at 6 o'clock.
Tonight's council meeting began at 5:00 p.m. The meeting, the zoning subcommittee was at 4:00 p.m. The council meeting was at 5:00 p.m.
This is the way you do business in Revere?
Madam, Mr. President? Could we suspend the rules or reconsider it? No reconsideration?
Certainly. Up for reconsideration?
Hope not prevail.
Reconsideration, all in favor?
The next item that the committee met on this evening was calendar item 17-407, and this is in regards to 320 to 329 Revere Beach Boulevard. The attorney representing the project asked that this remain in committee. So we have voted to leave it in committee.
All in favor?
Rule 23 Committee Reports, the following motions or communications are being reported out of various subcommittees with the recommendation to be placed on file.
Madam Clerk, if we can take them all up at once, my recommendation is to place them all in file. All in favor?
Signed I.
So that's the end of our business for the calendar year 2017. I wish all the residents of Revere and all the viewers, very happy holidays, and a happy new year, and have a safe Christmas and happy Hanukkah. January 1st will be our next scheduled meeting. Thank you.
No inauguration.
Sorry. Oh, pardon me. January 1st will be our inauguration. Thank you.
Calendrite number six is the zoning subcommittee report.